All right, I hereby call to order the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting for May 16th, 2023 at 7:35 PM. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News. Excuse me, the applicant for the second one, could just somebody stay for that so we can give you another date?
No, they already know, we told them.
They already know, I've been talking to them.
That's fine, that's fine, as long as they know. Any, okay, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM in any regular or special meeting, hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
Please lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Gianakis.
Here.
Mr. Hayne.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Flatley.
Here.
Mr. Opalka.
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Here.
Chairman Gurek.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, I was told there are no meeting minutes to vote on, so we're going to pass that by until next meeting. But we do have a, the, there was an issue at last meeting brought up by any objector to the Taco Bell Has- Hasabelle application concerning the, CSH, concerning the potential conflict of interest that our professional planner may have. There was some discussion about that, and they were, and they were going to do some extra homework. In the meantime, Liz, our professional planner, went back and spoke with her company, and they decided it would be the better part of valor to have her recuse herself from that application. So she has voluntarily done that, and there is no need to vote on that, there's no need to talk about it tonight except to announce that we are going to have, we are going to appoint a professional planner to provide consultant services to the board regarding the application filed by CSH Long Hill LLC, identified as application number 22-06Z. Now, the resolution, did everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any changes or comments to it or questions? None, okay. Do I have a motion to pass that resolution?
So moved.
Now, here's a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's the second? John.
John.
Uh, Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Ms. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Mr. Hayne.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Flatley.
Yes.
Mr. Opalka.
Yes.
And Chairman Gurek.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So that's done. Now, we have three, actually two that we have to move. There's a use variance major, well, three, but two that are listed here. Use variance major site plan application carried from 3723 and 41823 to be carried to 53023, which is block 10601, lot five and six, zone B and dash D, 1031 Valley Road, application number 22 dash 13Z, Hasabelle of Northeast LLC. Applicant proposes to develop a Taco Bell restaurant with drive-through facilities. Do I hear a motion to move that to the meeting date of May 30th, 2023?
I'll move that.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And as a note for the record, the May 30th date is a special meeting, so I will be noticing accordingly in the newspaper that we will be having a special for that application.
Yes, that's not a regularly, that's not a regular scheduled date.
I was unaware of that. I saw an email with that on there, but I didn't realize that that's what this date is, and I might have a conflict with that date. I don't know how many people I know to use variance, but...
Oh, you, you could respond to my email, that would be great, and just let me know when you're not going to be able to make it.
Is everybody else good with that date? Okay, so we should be okay. Um, thank you, Jerry, for bringing that up. Then we have another one. Use variance major site plan application carried from 5223 to be carried to 62023, block 11301 and 11401, lots four and 23 in zones B dash D and C. Oh, they got all the zones. Uh, Valley Road, application number 22 dash 06Z, CSH Long Hill LLC, care of Cali Law LLC. Applicant proposes to develop an 87-unit, 100-bed assisted living residence. Uh, do I hear a motion to carry that to June 20th, 23?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in real quick, just, uh, just for, uh, to cross it to you, dot the i, uh, both of those applications will be heard on the respective dates at 7:30 PM in this municipal building meeting room. Uh, and also, do we, if we need extensions of time to act, Deb, you'll get, make sure we get them in writing?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, it has come to our attention that the second applicant that was listed for tonight, which is a bulk variance block 12805, lot 11, zone R2, 90 Dogwood Terrace, application number 23 dash 03Z, Samantha Good, applicant proposes in addition, uh, and in-ground pool to the rear yard of a single-family residence. It came to our attention through our attorney that the newspaper notice lacked the date on it, and that is an essential element to the notice. So they were notified that their application's going to be carried to June 6th as one of the applicants on that date. Uh, do I hear a motion to carry that to June 6th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just also clarify, in addition to the 7:30 PM same location, um, even more importantly, uh, the, I reviewed the notice, the content was sufficient, it was timely served vis-à-vis certified mail, uh, so the applicant does not have to redo the notice, the personal notice as we call it, by certified mail to the, those who are within 200 feet of, uh, the perimeter of the subject lot. However, they unfortunately do have to redo the notice
In the paper.
Uh, for the newspaper, uh, and that will be, uh, so we are carrying it without further personal notice, but with further publication notice to June 6th, 2023. And of course, the June 6th date will be what they put in the newspaper, uh, so that they have both the personal and the public notice covered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, which brings us to the actual application that we're going to hear tonight. It's, uh, bulk variance block 13702, lot 20, zone R3, 142 Long Hill Road, application number 23 dash 04Z. Chris and Don Brindle, applicant proposes a, as second, a second story addition to a se- single-family residence. Yeah, you can sit right up at the table. You can put it right there, yeah, that's good.
Sir, please do share that we made the announcement, and again, all that they have to do is the publication for June 6th, and we look forward to seeing them.
Sounds right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for this one as well. Uh, and this one, everyone will be happy to hear that not only was the content sufficient and it was timely served, certified mail, May 6th published, May 4th, um, but it included all the requisite information, including the date of the meeting and the publication. Uh, so, uh, the ta- uh, the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide this application this evening.
Thank you. It's always good news, especially for the applicant. Uh, now, um, we have looked over the paperwork that you've given us, and normally what we do is we give the applicant a first shot at telling us, giving us overview of what you're doing, why you want to do it, and some information about it, and then present whatever witnesses you have, okay?
And I'll, with the chair's permission, I'll swear you all in, as well as our board professionals, including our engineer. Do, if you'll all raise your right hand, please, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, thank you. Well, he has to keep me straight on all of the legal stuff.
Got to earn my keep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Now, would you just care to fill us in on, uh, what you're going to do?
Sure, uh, 142 Long Hill Road, built by my great-grandfather, lived in by my grandparents for 60 years, and lucky enough to be able to purchase it at their passing about 10 years ago. So it's been in the family for a long time. Uh, grandparents did not have a lot of closets or a lot of space in the house. It was built in the 50s and nothing changed. And we are in a position in our lives where we're able to bring it up to standard, get another bathroom in there, sharing a bathroom with my wife, although she's lovely, it becomes a little difficult. And so we're going to do two bathroom, or an additional bathroom and two bedrooms upstairs, and create a more usable downstairs area with a, uh, large living room, dining room, and just remodel the existing kitchen.
Okay. Um, I see you've got photographs of the existing, and you've got a sketch of, of the proposed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that your architect that came?
That's my architect.
Okay, good, good. Um, and, and, um, you're doing this for, how many people in the house?
Just the two of us.
Okay, there's the two of you. Um, and, um, just repeat again what rooms you're adding?
Well, we're not really even, we're, and when it's all said and done, we're adding one bathroom, because it's a three-bedroom, one bath currently. So we're adding one ba- one bathroom and, uh, enlarging our living room area.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so you're not add, but it looks like you're adding a second floor, though.
Well, second floor on the, on-
I'm on a cathedral ceiling in our living room, so-
Oh, okay.
Hence why it looks big.
It looks big, but it's, it's just for space on one side.
Okay, all right. Is there an actual usable second floor?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Now?
No, no, no.
No. Yeah, when, yeah, when we're done there, yeah.
What's going to be on the second floor?
Two bedrooms, one bathroom.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And where the bedrooms are downstairs, this is going to be part of a living room.
Okay, good, all right. Um, all right, is your architect prepared to?
He's, he's ready to go.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant before we hear the architect? Okay, go ahead.
Do you need to swear in?
Yeah, yes.
Well, you're, you're already sworn in, but I'll qualify you as an expert if you'll give us the benefit of your educational and work experience, particularly whether you're licensed.
I'll do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hogs the spotlight all the time.
The chair will do that.
Would you give us the benefit of your education and your licensing?
Yeah, I, I went to Virginia Tech, I have a ba- a professional bachelor of architecture. I've been licensed since 80, 87. Uh, I do residential addition alteration work in the area. I've actually appeared before this board, but it's been a while. The last time was up at the other building, so-
Oh, well, that has been a while.
It has been a while, yeah, for, for Long Hill Township, so, but I've been doing this for a long time.
Great, and you're still act, your current, your license is current New Jersey?
Yes.
You have any licenses in any other state?
No.
Okay. All right, I deem you an expert, thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm trying to get your name and business, business address.
Yeah, it's Alan Leonard, L-A-O-N-A-R-D, and the, uh, address is 131 Passaic Street, New Providence, New Jersey.
Yep.
It's on the drawing.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do I, if I talk, do you?
Well, you can take the mic with you.
Okay.
The mic comes with you.
I feel like doing stand-up or something. This is better, though.
You better be funny, then.
Well, no, no, yeah, no. Um, so, uh, the Brindles, as they mentioned, have a one-story house with three bedrooms, a, a living room and, and a kitchen, and they wanted to get more space and open up the house. And one of the things about their lot is, uh, or their neighborhood is almost everyone's one-story, almost. The house next to them has a, has a two-story element like this, and then a longer roof with some dormers. But everyone else is pretty much a one-story house till you get further west on, uh, on, 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 on Long Hill Road, and then there's a couple two stories. But with being up on the hill and being the neighborhood it is, they didn't want to go for a two-story house, they didn't want to just have a two-story, like, center hall colonial kind of thing. So we're still trying to keep like a one-story look, so, um, what we've done is, and it, it's actually a kind of a wholesale renovation, uh, alteration on the first floor. Let me go to the first floor. So, right now, they have a kitchen, and then the bed, there's three bedrooms across the back and a bath, and then they have the living space in the front next to the kitchen. And part of the project is to keep the one bedroom, make it a little bigger because it's smaller, redo the bathroom, redo the kitchen, add some pantry space, and then just have this open great room, basically. Have a table in the front, have the family room in the back area, just open, uh, an exposed stair up to, uh, there's going to be this balcony with some bookshelves, uh, out to this dormer, and then two bedrooms upstairs, the master, and then this extra bedroom with some closet space, and then this bathroom, shared bathroom. So, the idea of the project is just to make the house, I don't know, I don't know if more liberals are right, but better livable.
Yeah.
Better for them.
More usable.
More usable. And so, we are not changing much in terms of the house, in terms of zoning. We're going straight up. Um, they asked, I don't know if the engineer's here, um, they'd asked, uh, or the planner had asked a certain-
They're sitting right there.
There you go. Oh, they're both, there you go. It's been that long.
They bite. We do.
So, we're, we're asking for, um, uh, setbacks to the side and also for lot coverage. Their lot is way undersized, they're in the R3 zone calling for 30,000 square foot lots, so 16,600, I think 618, 636. They're too, they're small, both for size and width for the R4 zone, which is 20,000 square foot lots, and so they're just on a very narrow, the lot's pretty long at 250 feet at the one corner, it's a little irregular, but it's only 54 feet in the front. And so when it wedges out here, uh, one of the questions was, um, what the, uh, what the total frontage is along the building line. It's, it's almost 75 feet. So, uh, it doesn't reduce, there was an issue of reducing the side yard, um, because of the percentage allowable, but you can only do that up to 12 and a half feet. So, their existing house is 9.74 on the front, and we just don't have that. The other thing that they had asked about was, I took that to the building, so, not to the overhang. So we actually have a three-foot overhang, which isn't just there for the heck of it. To get the volume, I, it's, it's just a, it's, it's a design, not trick, but-
Height of ceiling.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I have a 12-on-12 pitch, right? But I needed to get enough height in the middle because where these roofs meet, there's no dormer across the back. They get volume from this dormer on the side and the volume through the middle, and then where valleys hit, you lose some height. And so it's simply to create some volume in here for the bedroom space, and then we're just carrying it straight across. So, uh, you know, I, I, so the setback, the 9.3 that we're carrying straight up is true, but we're coming in three feet with the overhang.
So it's three feet less than the nine feet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be six point.
And I take it the house was built nine feet from the property line?
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the great-grandfather.
He built two houses and a shared driveway, and I guess in 1952 they didn't care how quickly or how close they put them together, so-
That, that didn't develop over time, it was built that-
It was built like that in 52.
And that predated any ordinances like that.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're pretty set back. I mean, uh, they have the shared driveway, like you said, so I don't think the impact on the neighbors is going to be that great, it's not like they're too close to their property line. I brought the, I mean, just to give you an idea, and this is, all these drawings are in your, in your packet.
Yeah, I was just going to reference, uh, so far we saw the elevations and the five pictures that were previously submitted more than 10 days in advance, so we don't have to mark them as exhibits. That's just so far, so good. No problem marking them exhibits, by the way, but we don't have to.
They're all the same, the only thing is I added the, the building setback line on the survey.
You did on the survey, on the, on page one?
Uh, not, uh, hold on, no, it's not.
The first one you showed us, or which?
No, just the last one I just showed you.
That's what I'm saying, if, if you can go back one.
So you had this drawing?
Yep.
When they asked for this building set, uh, total width?
You wrote it on there.
I just wrote it on here to highlight.
Let's just call that one Exhibit A1.
Okay. And I'll, I can turn it, I can leave it with you guys.
No, no.
I noticed that your photograph, um, it's not labeled a number, but it's the one that has the driveway in it, shows a little overhang out off the, a side door.
There, there is an existing overhang that sticks out over, uh, an entrance.
That's about a three foot.
It is, we're not going any closer than that.
Okay, so that would track approximately where the overhang is you're talking about now?
Yeah, just higher.
Higher, okay, so it would be less intrusive?
Yeah, 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 yes.
But you already have, you already have minus the nine, the, you already have less than nine feet because of that overhang?
To that overhang, yes.
Okay. So is that actually an existing condition?
It is, we're just making it go down the side.
Okay.
And it is simply, when you carry these overhangs, partly do this, I conceivably stop it, but it's just to break the bulk. So when you, when you get to the side, what happens is, even though the wall's the same, because of the overhang coming up so far, the actual amount of wall space is about three and a half, four feet that you see. And so I think it, it helps to mitigate the bulk on the thing.
The other house that's to the left, I guess, or?
Yeah, to the west, yeah.
That's further setback off their property line?
For, setback from their side or the front?
The sideline, I'm, you know, because I noticed there's a picture here.
They're probably a little bit further than you.
The house is further away from that.
Maybe 12 feet, 15?
Because they have their garage next to their property line.
They have a garage down below, they just have a-
Garage is under.
Underneath, that's right, yeah.
So, in effect, uh, they won't be, they, they won't, they're not that close to their property line, then?
No, you can see it flares out, so the property line splits the driveway. It's actually, I don't know if it looks as wide as it is, but it splits the driveway. And you can see- And you can see this overhang over here.
Would the twelve feet that you estimate be to the property line, which is the middle of the shared driveway, or would it be to the curb?
Twelve feet to, oh, you mean if we were to take twelve feet off the-
No, 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 no. You just estimated twelve feet.
To the, to the side of the building.
The, the house next door being twelve feet setback, that's what you just said.
I, yeah, I need to estimate.
No, I got you. Proximate, that's an estimate. The, 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 the question I have is, from the house, to where? To the curb or to the property line, which you just explained is right down the middle of the shared driveway? Well, where would the twelve-foot estimate be to the property line?
From the property line.
To the property line, meaning the middle of the shared driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay. That's all right. Continue.
Um, so, I, I, we think it's a reasonable application in terms of the house. We're going up, I think, point zero one on lot coverage, cause there, there's these little bay elements, and we have this entry roof in the front.
Okay, so it's, it's basically minor little, uh, additions to the platform there?
Yes.
And, um, the, um, so it's just basically your side yard and your, uh, lot coverage?
May, I'm sorry, may I jump in?
Go ahead.
Lot coverage is going up by point zero one?
No, more than that.
No.
Or, point one. It's, no, so on the one chart and-
I thought that's what you just said, I'm sorry. She just, maybe, maybe I should just ask you to restate what you just said.
Let me just give you the figure. Oh, wait, I have it on here, hold on.
Well, on our, our engineer says twenty-six point nine-two to twenty-eight point zero one. Is that correct?
No, it's twenty-seven point zero one, and then I think on the, the second page, uh, I mean, in his report, he has a twenty-seven point zero one or-
I, I, I calculate that differently.
I'm getting confused.
Because if they have a current, if, if permitted is thirty-three, three, seven, two, oh, at twenty percent, then that means that the lot is sixteen, six, eight, six, right?
Sixteen, six, three, six?
Six, thirty-six.
Yeah.
Six, thirty-six.
I mean, the only thing we're adding are these bays, which come out of foot, and the entry roof. One, you know, one percent would be, what, a hundred sixty-some square feet?
Sure.
So, we're-
We're just trying to figure out whether the numbers are correct. They have, I mean, we want accurate numbers.
Yeah, I, I, when I was looking, I don't know if it's the planner's report or the others, someone had mentioned the twenty-seven point zero one.
I didn't mention that, but I asked for you to give a breakdown.
Well, so, no, so I have, so the, I don't know if it, if it, if it, hopefully, this is what you're looking for. On your site plan, I broke down the various areas.
Yeah, it's either point, it's like one, I think it's, I actually think it's point one.
It's point one?
It's point one, it looks like.
Point one, not point zero one, that's right.
It looks like point one to me, or point zero nine, if you go around.
Increase?
Yeah.
Points, yeah, point zero nine, that's right. It's going from twenty-six point nine-two to twenty-seven point zero one.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Lot of different numbers, and none of them are consistent.
I get twenty-six point four and twenty-six point nine-three, my calculations, so.
Maybe we should, uh, utilize our experts' memos and, and have them work off of what this gentleman's telling them.
But I- Either way, it's probably not point zero one, it's probably point one.
It's much more than point zero nine or something like that.
Point zero nine, yeah.
Point one, point oh-nine.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Either one. I just heard point zero one, and it didn't look like it was on the sheet, that's why I questioned, sorry.
And if there's gonna be a resolution, uh, what, what, where, what are we going from and what are we going to? And let's get one number for each of those, that our professionals agree to.
Let our planner tell it, okay?
Yes.
Or engineer, either one.
Either one, cause we got different.
So, no, so, so with, uh, existing square footage of four, four, seven, eight, and a lot of sixteen, six, thirty-six, it's twenty-six point nine, one, seven. So, twenty-six point nine-two percent existing coverage.
So, the planner has that correct?
And then the-
And the engineer.
And then the proposed condition is four, four, nine, four square feet, over the same lot area is twenty-seven point oh-one.
Okay.
Okay, so-
So, it went up by point oh-nine.
So, then the three, 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 seven point two is wrong?
Three, 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 seven.
Under the required permitted?
That's permitted, not proposed.
Yeah, that's permitted, that number does-
I understand, but that's how I base what the, what the lot size is, by just multiplying that number by five.
No, you, I don't think that's-
Right?
No, that should be, that should be twenty percent of six, sixteen, six, thirty-six.
Which is not that number.
No, it's, it's three, three, two, seven.
Gotcha, that's why my calculation's wrong.
Point two, it's a, it's, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so, the applicant is proposing to go from twenty-six point nine-two to twenty-seven point oh-one?
Right.
Okay. Much, much less than we originally had on the planner's memo, so that's good.
I used their application.
I wasn't judging.
That's why we're planning out. I mean, no, nobody's, yeah, yeah, don't worry about that.
No judgments.
But then, can I, can I ask?
Sure.
And I'm confused as, as to the discussion that was just going on, but you, so there's two variances. There's obviously this lot coverage, which we agree has, is, um, you're exacerbating something, or that it's already existed. But the other one, the minimum side yard of one, that the twenty-five foot required, that's with the overhang? That's what we're talking about with the-
No, so I took it to the side of the building, cause in most towns, that's where it is. I didn't realize you took it to the overhang, so that was, that was my fault.
But regardless, if I understand correctly, and maybe, uh, our planner can weigh in on that, um, the, uh, the side yard setback deviation is really just a, an extension by-
Of that little roof.
Vertical extension, uh, uh, of the setback.
No, it's not, because if you look at actually what you said, it's, it's a little bit not. If you look at that top photo, the extension's actually facing the roadway currently, and if you look at that drawing now, that extension is actually facing the driveway.
So, what's the existing side yard setback?
But, but it's facing the same way as this little roof, I think is the chairman's point.
Dormer over the-
Into the dormer, right, but that, but that, I think, that's, is that what you were saying?
Let me, let me ask the question, cause we're gonna need the numbers.
Yeah.
But, 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 cause if we don't know where we're starting from and where we're going, we can't give them the accurate relief. The, the, um-
Maybe-
What is the existing side yard setback? I know twenty-five is the required. What's the existing?
So, just, I'm sorry, who's that for?
No, 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 I think that-
Maybe all of you to figure out.
Well, no, what I would ask is, what is the side, the side yard setback to that, um, overhang?
It's a three-foot overhang, so it would be, so on the survey, I hope this, the survey that, uh, was done of the site is to the side of the building, so it would be three foot less than the number on the survey.
But is it that thing a three?
Six point seven.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, it's six point seven, not nine?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's nine point seven here to the existing wall, and, but to the overhang, it's three foot less.
That's actually not what I'm talking about.
This one?
Yeah, to that.
It comes out about three foot over the platform. It's the same, yeah.
So, here goes-
So, nominally-
So, what is the existing side yard setback?
Six point seven.
Six point seven, okay.
Six point seven.
And what is the proposed setback, six point seven?
So, that's, that was my question.
So, once again, we're just talking about a vertical extension of the existing setback.
So, is that then an existing non-conformity?
No, cause it's a vertical extension. I just wanted to get the facts first, and that's before I could answer that question. The, the, it's a vertical extension. Under the law, uh, even if it's the same encroachment, even if it's less of an encroachment, as long as it's an encroachment within the, in this case, twenty-five foot required side yard setback, uh, whether it's a, i- if it's vertical or horizontal, that requires new or additional variance relief. After that, after that.
We have the numbers here.
That was what I was looking for, Claire.
Three, seven. Totally arid, two, eight.
Um, now, um, do you, um, you have any other information?
Just, just one other thing that, um, it's, it's in the application. It's, it's, I think it's pretty minor. Uh, the roof, the roof is gonna be this gable roof, so I don't even know, we, this balcony comes over, to that point is twenty-three point nine-two, but it's just under this gable end. I don't know if it even would matter.
Well, explain how, what's twenty-three point nine-two? The other setback?
The other setback is twenty-three point-
Two-three?
Two-three, and then if I put a side yard line to where the balcony's gonna be under the roof, I don't even know if we, if I need to bring this up. It's, it's twenty-three point nine-two.
It's greater.
It's greater than what's there, yeah. But it's not, it's not like the others.
But that existing twenty-three point two-three wall is to remain?
Yeah, we're just carrying it straight up, and the overhang on that side is just this rake overhang.
Yeah. So, the existing is remaining and still-
Just going straight up.
So, it's still a variant.
Twenty-three point-
We need a variance on both sides of the house?
Yeah. Twenty-three point what?
Two, so you see where the crosshatch is? That's meant to indicate where they actually have some new second floor, this balcony. And so, at the closest point, it's twenty-three point nine-two, and because this is skewed away, you can see at the back, there are what, twenty-nine point four, five or something?
Cause of the angle.
Yeah.
For, for which?
That's for the right side.
It's the right side.
The other side, right, but it, but it's, oh, twenty-three point nine-two, so it is, it-
No, hold on.
Yeah, let's, let's clarify this with our experts.
Alright. So, because of the yard modification section of the ordinance, the side yard, the minimum side yard setback on one side, which is twenty-five in the bulk standards, can be reduced to as little as twelve point five. So, the request on the short side is six point seven, where twelve point five is required.
Okay.
On the combined aggregate, the other side doesn't have to meet-
Right.
Doesn't have to meet the twenty-five, cause it's only held to twelve point five. On the combined aggregate, um, we need to dimension the lot width at the building line to confirm the combined aggregate.
So, the, the lot width is, it's almost ninety, seventy-five feet if you follow, I, I didn't know if you wanted to go straight over. It's like seventy-five point five if you take it straight across, but I went, I went, I went ninety to the property line, so I was a little under seventy-five.
Seventy-five, we'll take seventy-five out, across the front. And the to- the combined, the aggregate side yard can be reduced by six inches for each foot the lot is less the minimum width requirement. And what's the minimum? The minimum width is one fifty.
I didn't know how to take off thirty-seven and a half feet when-
We're gonna, we're gonna cleanly take-
Seventy-five.
The seventy-five off of the one fifty. So, we're gonna take the thirty-seven and a half as the, off of the total, which was allowed to be... What was, what was the allowable aggregate?
Twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two. So, there is no aggregate standard for this lot?
Which means what?
It's a negative number.
It's a negative number.
A negative number.
The code creates a negative number.
So, they're not in violation of the combined side yard setback. They're only in violation by a vertical extension of the side yard setback one side, on the short side, so to speak.
On the short side.
Six point seven versus twelve point five, cause you're saying that they're allowed to go actually down to twelve point five, uh, half the twenty, uh, half the twenty-five?
Correct.
Uh, and the lot coverage only went up from twenty-six point nine-two to twenty-seven point oh-one, correct?
Correct, okay.
Okay. There's your variance relief, everybody.
Yeah. It helps to get things straight.
No, no, absolutely.
That was the hard part.
Yeah, I think that was the hardest part of the whole night.
I think the easier part might be your C-one undue hardship argument, but keep going.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, it, it, I, I guess go into the, the hardship argument, is that it's an exceptionally undersized lot that's too narrow, and there's, there's nothing really, I, even if they wanted to put this behi- behind the building, it still would need a variance.
Both, both lots on either adjacent side or, you know, on either side are developed lots with single-family dwellings?
Yeah.
Okay, and the house behind the developed lot with single-family dwelling?
Yeah, there's a, there's an extreme hill, so-
So, fair to say that there's no adjacent property that'd be available for purchase at fair market value for them to eliminate or bring their lot, uh, uh, size into or closer to conformity?
No, there's no.
There's none available. So, in other words, it'd be correct to say that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, the, um, additions to the house are to make it a, a more livable, um, modern house.
Yeah, it's really undersized for, for Long Hill anyway.
Uh, back in the fifties, that was acceptable.
Fifty-three over-
That was valacious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it fair to say that the color, material, material and architectural character of the exterior of the addition will be at least substantially similar to the exterior of the balance of the home?
It's gonna be better.
Yeah, I mean-
What I'm saying, it'll be relatively uniform.
Yes.
Oh, yes. In, in substantialness.
What is going to be the exterior? Uh, what kind of siding?
Uh, it's most likely gonna be hardy board. Uh, I don't wanna go vinyl.
Hardy plank, we, we're gonna have some board in the back as well.
So, it's gonna look, uh, it's gonna look wood and, 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 uh, not too modern?
Correct. More farmhouse, if you will.
We have some truss elements that will probably stain. It's gonna be nice on what's there. It's, it's a small house.
The neighborhood is similar to that in, in the siding in the houses, mostly.
It's a mix, but-
Yeah, I'd say it's a mix.
We won't be out of character.
Okay. Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alright, so I just want, just so I understand, cause I was looking at the numbers that you put on the survey, and, um, in terms of the lot coverage. And it looked like you were adding, you have twenty-eight square feet for the bays, and fifty square feet for the covered entry. Is it correct? So, that, that is, you know, together is eighty-one square feet.
Okay.
And then, but then the lot coverages that we cited before was just an increase of sixteen. Now, is it because that they're already, were, were in the existing?
Well, the, I didn't count the roof over the platform, cause the platform's existing.
So, so-
I just counted the bays that are, that are going over, but dirt.
But those are twenty-eight square feet.
So, the tw- the twenty-eight square feet bay window additions?
Yeah, there's three of them. They come out of foot, they're about nine foot wide.
So, what's the difference between the sixteen square foot increase and the twenty-eight square foot increase?
Um, that's a good question. I, it's, it's, there's always a possibility that I did my math slightly wrong.
I think the, the, the concern is that-
Yeah, it's twenty-eight, it's twenty-eight square feet.
So, you have three bay windows, two in the front, one in the back.
They're all nine foot four by one foot deep.
And one, one of them, the right, right when facing the home, is over an existing bay window.
That's true too, maybe that-
So, so that twenty-eight, that twenty-eight square feet is not all being added to the plan?
No, that, and that might be, be the explanation.
And then, and then also with the fifty-three of the step?
It's over the steps, I didn't count that.
And that's over the existing steps?
Well, the fifty, the fifty-three is in the four, four, nine, four. The four, and you did count it, and so I'm just trying to understand.
Now I'm lost.
Yeah, no, I, I-
But you're right, there was a bay. I, I probably would've taken that out, cause it's existing.
Okay, so it's just, it didn't make sense to me, because of what you, when you look at what's new.
So, what are we doing with the lot coverage then?
It's, it sounds like it's still four, four, nine, four.
Fine.
But what we, what's not clear is that some of it was, it's, it's, it's netted out.
Okay.
So, that, that's-
Is it still twenty-seven point oh-one that they're asking for?
Correct.
Yes.
A longhand math you can't do from what's on the plans.
Right.
So, we're just making sure that they were netted out appropriately to get the twenty-seven point oh-one.
So, that should be fixed if, if-
Yeah, maybe just to make it clear, if, if, you know-
Do you want me to note the bay coming out?
Well, no, you, you did, but I think what you, we wanna see maybe is, okay, we're adding fifty-three square feet, but actually, there's already a certain amount of square footage that's already accounted for, so it's not actually an additional fifty-three, it's, it's netted out.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Sort of, yeah.
I, I, I think what she's saying is to make sure that if, in fact, you get a positive resolution of this, that whatever you, you alter or fix should be accurate, so you should work with her.
Well, absolutely.
Either, like, i- i- in both instances, they appear to be de minimis in the, in the amount of lot coverage added, so we just wanna make sure that you get as much as you're proposing, so that it's correct on the record for any future improvements to the home.
Yes, because if somehow in the future, somebody comes back for something else on this property, we wanna make sure we started with an accurate number.
No, no, absolutely.
I think just, um-
Should, should I just mention the existing platform? I, I just sort of, I think I just took it as a wash when I did my figures.
Uh, existing and proposed side by side?
I'll just do a listing of the different things.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
I'm sorry, I thought this is what you wanted, I was so.
Yeah, no, that's the way to do it.
So we'll take that as a condition of approval so you could, you confirm your numbers.
I'll put it on the working drawings.
Yes.
Yes.
We get, we got it as a condition.
If we get approved.
Yes.
Because that protects everyone so that you know.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, and I understand the confusion here because there's a lot of little cutouts and things that stick out, so. Um, I just wanna let everybody know that I don't see any public, there's nobody hiding behind this easel, all right?
Nope.
Uh, I'm just making sure. Uh, so as far as that goes, I'm gonna close the meeting to the public because there are no public ask questions. Um, so that means that we're not asking questions. Yes, I will. Um, Joe, did you get all the questions you had answered on your report? If not, would you clarify that?
Yeah, so um, the project should be exempt from our minor development standards um, based on what's in front of us, and so the, the criticality for as you move to construction would be that um, no disturbance of the lot around the home, so, right, so just limiting your contractor to ensure that there's less than fifteen thousand square feet of disturbance around the home as they're ma- doing the construction. And I'm confident that you can, you can construct that way.
Yes.
And you are as well, okay.
And we'll put the sales fence up and.
And then, as you run the roof leaders from the new roof, obviously you're changing roof patterns, we're gonna wanna run all of those roofs consistently to the same drainage points. So the existing roof leaders that come down
Okay.
should be maintained for the same roof area by gutter to flow to those same locations.
Okay.
And since you're all going up with the de minimis increase in lot coverage, right from the home?
Yep.
Then the drainage will be maintained and there won't be any adverse impacts to neighbors.
Okay.
Okay, so there's, they put a three point four on your report?
That's three point four.
Yep.
Yep.
And, and they slope directly down to the road, so I wouldn't, even, even if there was some drainage
Off the front of the lot.
issue, it would just go out down, down the lot.
Does it go down the driveway or where does it go?
Um, I'm trying to. Fifty-fifty, head, the house is split, half goes to the left and half goes to the right, so half of it goes down the driveway.
But it stays basically in your lot down to the west.
And it all comes to the front currently?
It comes to the front and then there's a storm drain right in front of the house.
So anything, any roof that would drain to the back on the addition should then be wrapped around with the roof leader towards the front so it drains again.
We can do that with a subsurface pipe?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just so we're not putting water on to any neighbor in the.
No, 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 we won't wanna do that.
Is there any back drainage right now? Is there anything going off the back of the house to the back?
No, nothing goes back, just the, the two gutters go to the side.
Okay, so that would be a change because you have more bulk in the back, so you'd have some gutters in the back, uh, uh,
Yep.
for the addition, okay. Uh, good point. Anything else?
That's everything.
That's everything. Liz?
Um, I think the only additional comments in these, I would ask if they, if the board are to look favorably on the application is to double check or have a breakdown of the floor area ratio.
Okay.
And, and numbers in addition to the impervious coverage.
Right.
Um, the only other question I had was, is just to just to check if the colors and materials of the addition are gonna be match what's existing.
Oh, I asked that question.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, I'm, I was.
Well, you were doing lot coverage. You're gonna, you're gonna.
We're gonna go white and black.
They're gonna change the, the color of the entire house.
Well, the house is.
It's currently white with black accents, it's gonna be the same.
Right, so, but it's all gonna get a makeover.
Yes, sir.
Yes, new siding and windows.
Yeah, it's not gonna be like, uh, you're gonna put old with new, everything's gonna be new.
Not going through all this for that.
Yeah.
And no cupola.
No little cupola? Ah, that's, that's, that's so nineteen fifty.
We'll put it on your garage.
She loved the cupola.
And you said your grandparents built this house?
My great-grandfather built this house.
Great-grandfather?
Yeah, this house and the house next door that shares the driveway, my grandparents moved into it in nineteen fifty-four, I believe.
Wow.
And left it in the early twenty-ten, twenty-oh-eight and twenty-ten.
So there's a lot of history, uh.
Yeah, I grew up in the house.
His grandparents, the last thing was dress school, they volunteered at the senior center until they were probably close to ninety.
Wow, good for them.
And our neighbor Ethel, who's still on the rescue squad, was super close with them and it used to crack me up, I mean, she still drives people to the airport and she's about to be ninety.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the stuff is, yeah, no, she is a broken mold, I mean, she's unbelievable, she'll, you know, was always offered to help us, I'm like, Ethel, it's kinda supposed to be the other way.
She called me tonight to say, hey, I got your thing in the mail. And I just want you to know, I don't, I don't have any issue with anything you guys wanna do, but I just can't make the meeting, I'm like, okay, Ethel, we'll be okay, we'll figure it out.
Does any member have any additional questions of either our expert, their expert or the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
I do.
Yes.
Forgive me, I, I understood the, the lot coverage variance.
Yeah.
The one before that I didn't, could someone repeat that for me?
You mean the, uh, side yard?
Side yard variance, yeah.
Yeah, would you, would you run over that for?
Yeah, sure, so, um, the way side yard, we have.
Did your mic working?
I, I don't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so the way, um, side yard has been sort of traditionally calculated or even a front or any yard, it's to, um, the closest point of the building. So in this instance, you have the flat, you know, wall, but then the roof is overhanging it. And so the, the calculation really should be, I don't have a third hand, but the calculation should really be to here um, and not to the, to the wall. And so that what was presented initially was a calculation just to, to the wall and it really should be to the overhang.
Oh, thank you.
Which is essentially staying the same because the overhang. Uh, Rob, I mean, Jonathan?
Just Jerry.
No, Jonathan, not Jerry.
Okay.
Jerry talks too much.
You had, in your report, you had a, some question about the garage, is that not a question anymore?
I can, I, I will ask that, I guess, which is just to confirm that the garage, because I think it is based on looking at it, that it's less than twenty feet in height.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, just landscaping, have you planned to do any additional landscaping?
I mean, it's an at a level, so off the cuff, I don't think you're talking anything.
I mean, it's probably gonna be in keeping similar, I'm hoping that my trees don't get destroyed because they weren't cheap. So I have just a couple of nice pieces of landscaping and all the flowers that are there are actually were flowers that his grandmother planted or that I gave her over the years and they kinda just pop back up, so I'm hoping that that won't get destroyed.
So you're gonna, you're gonna keep the, essentially it's some of these same bushes and trees that are in the.
Well, I think it's maybe in front of the building, but in terms of side yard or zoning issues.
Oh, yeah, nothing on the side, it would just be.
They're probably buffered in the back, they're open in the front and they have paving on the side, and even on there, there's a lot of trees, do you?
Yeah, I see to the right.
To the right side.
Yeah.
Is mature.
I didn't see any in front of the house or any, anything like that.
There's just a giant walnut down at the bottom of the property.
Yeah, it's like, almost on the street.
I mean, we'll probably put, keep, see, I don't know if we'll keep these, but.
Uh, we'll probably do something, it, it helps buffer, you know, the.
Some appropriate, uh, plantings
Yeah, like topiary or something, yeah.
to match the, the house.
The standing.
Yes.
Would the, uh, if the board so desired and our planner was so willing, would you stipulate to providing landscape buffering along the side yard?
Of which?
Subject to the reasonable discretion of our planner?
Which side?
Well, I was going to the, the, the side that's encroaching the most, the short side is.
It's, it's paving.
It's the driveway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there is no, there's no.
The neigh- the neighbors won't like that.
I don't think they, except for the occasional weed goes through the crack of the driveway, I don't think they're gonna, come on.
What's her name, Ethel? Would, would Ethel put some?
Ethel, she's one more house away.
Oh, she's one more house?
She would, Ethel would let us do whatever.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Right.
Yeah, no, she's the answer.
Okay, still getting able to plant some bushes there. Um, any other questions, um, Jerry?
I'm all set, thank you.
Good, all right, um, no, okay, anyway. Okay, uh, um, Gary, you wanna start the deliberation?
Sure, um, I think that the, the design that you've got there, you've met a lot of the, uh, rules to make this work on a, on a site that is, uh, what's the term when it's non-conform, non-conforming, I guess?
Right, non-conforming.
So you've, you've, you've dealt with cards that don't make it easy to do what you wanna do. And I think, uh, the layout on the inside and the way the outside looks is, is a large improvement. Um, did Ethel know your grandparents or your?
Oh, yeah.
They were really close.
Really close people.
I'm sure that she could attest if she were here, if she could've made it, that they would've liked it as well, so glad to see you keeping on the tradition of the family homestead and I'm in favor of this application.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I agree with everything Gary just said, I'll just add that I think that you've met both the C-one and C-two, um, requirements given the, the law and then also just the improvement that you're doing, it'll impact the neighborhood positively. I don't see any detriment and I'm in favor of the application.
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, everything said so far, uh, I don't see any issues. Uh, and agree that, uh, I think the application should move forward.
Tom?
Um, I believe the applicant has met all the requirements of the statute and therefore I vote to approve the application.
Scott?
I think it's a vast improvement from what's there now, no pun intended.
No hesitation.
Looks like a beautiful design and I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, I think you met the criteria also, I think you proved that you had a hardship there with the narrowness of the property, the shape and size and the dimensions, uh, made it difficult to, to build there, and I don't think there's any impairment at all to any of our zoning ordinances or plan, I think you're, I think it's a good application, wish you, wish you luck.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I'm in favor of your point.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thanks for doing the right thing by putting in the application, but there's no reason that anybody should say no to this, I don't think. Uh, it's, it's better than what you currently have and it, it still remains, it will remain in the style of that neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with my fellow board members, I think that you've done a fine job improving the house and making it more livable, more up to date. I hope it inspires others on the street, they're the same, you know, uh, the street would look, would look nice if, uh, the other houses, you know, similar, did similar updates and things because they all seem to be the similar type sizes.
Actually seems like there are some going on in those lives.
But, um, so that I think that you've met the hardship, uh, criteria and you've done the best you can with the side yard setbacks. Um, you know, back then, shared driveways were not a big deal and, you know, they didn't think about those things back then, but now with the ordinances and zoning and everything, it becomes a, a hardship, so I would also be in favor of it.
Thank you.
What, can I hear a, uh?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion with the conditions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's start with the, uh, conditions of approval.
Right, that's what I was gonna do.
Want me to give motion? It's a, uh, it's a motion for, uh, to grant approval for side yard setbacks, six point seven feet versus twelve point five required. Uh, and lot coverage twenty, uh, six point nine two percent increase to twenty-seven point oh one percent, where twenty percent is the maximum. And that variance relief would be with all the stipulated two conditions, uh, including the landscaping, uh, to be, uh, put on the drive, no, I'm kidding about that.
You wanna put a bush there, I'll put a bush there.
Uh, redoing the numbers for, uh, with breakdowns for both the lot coverage and the floor area ratio. Uh, and the exterior of the, uh, addition being substantially similar in color, architectural materials, uh, I'm sorry, arch- and architectural character to the balance of the exterior of the dwelling, in other words, it's all gonna be relatively the same. Uh, and, uh, I believe that is all we had, actual conditions, everything else was testimony. Uh, although there will be a, a three point four in, in the Van Cleef engineering memo, all proposed roof leaders for the second story addition will be, uh, shall maintain same, I don't know, uh, else a drainage statement with proposed mitigation will be required.
Well, they're gonna.
But it's, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be the site, yeah.
The, the drainage from the back is gonna around through, out to drainage.
That's fine, yeah.
And, uh, and the soil erosion and settlement control measures will be, uh, adhered to. Uh, and that is what I have, Mr. Chair.
So I hear a motion to move with those conditions.
I think we had a motion by Mr. Aronio.
We do.
Somebody need a second?
Second.
Okay.
We'll call, please.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Ginokas?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yep.
Vice Chairman Greskov?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good luck on your construction. Are you gonna be able to live in the house, uh?
With those luck, we're gonna be living in thirty.
Is that right?
Oh. Good luck with that. Yeah, but hey, thank you, thank you for coming, making proving the, the, uh, the viability of the township with this nice house.
We're gonna make.
Come back and find out.
He's gonna plant a tree in the pavement.
I have several.
Yeah.
I cannot.
I wish you, I keep buying him watches and I'm. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
All right, now, would you give us a rundown of what we're coming up with so everybody knows?
Sure, so, all right. June sixth, we now have two residuals and the start, oh, well, hopefully, we, uh, it's a commercial application. It's fairly simple, one, compared to some of the other things, but I don't wanna jinx anything.
But what is the, where is it?
It's five forty-one Mountain Avenue.
Okay.
Before that, we have May, right?
No, oh, we have May thirtieth, you're right, uh, thank you, Mr. Ginokas, I appreciate that. Uh, yeah, so we have the special meeting for Taco Bell on the thirtieth, day after Memorial Day. Uh, June sixth, we have the two residuals.
And we already have a planner for that, right?
We have a planner, yes, for, no, for Taco Bell.
Oh, that's, no, Taco Bell, we didn't need. I get, I'm getting those confused, I'm getting those confused.
We have a favorite planner.
Okay, it's the senior thing that we don't, it's the, it's the assisted living we need the planner for.
Correct.
I'm somehow getting the, the hamburgers mixed with the.
You're getting all the.
All these, these initials, they're getting me crazy here, go ahead.
Yeah, you're getting food in the senior tsunami or the silver tsunami is their planner's.
There you go, okay.
Silver tsunami. Um, so June sixth, that covers, uh, uh, June twentieth will be, um, CSH, the assisted living facility. And I'm, I mean, depending on how far we get with the five forty-one Mountain Avenue on June sixth, we may rule that one into the twentieth, just for, give them maybe a little bit of time.
Okay.
Before CSH, because CSH is gonna be quite a few meetings.
Yeah.
So, uh, July eleventh, you have the Sterling Fountain for the ice cream shop. And July twenty-fifth, right now is his carry date for whatever we need.
Okay, good, all right.
I'm just curious, is the Sterling Fountain, what did, did, do they want it open earlier because it's an ice cream shop?
They are opening earlier, yes, they're ready, they're just about ready to open, yes.
Okay.
So what they're proposing is a walk-up window from their parking lot.
They don't need us to open.
We're not slowing them down with ice cream.
Correct, no, no, you're not slowing them down, but.
Jerry wants ice cream.
Yes.
I, I. I just want a new owner to like have to wait all summer to, to get his schedule.
They'll have to wait for the walk-up.
I have a question about the CSH. Aren't we supposed to hear, like, what other objections they're gonna potentially have, everybody?
Hopefully, uh, we'll be taking that, uh, care of that behind the scenes between Steve and, you know.
I didn't hear.
The objectors, uh, for CSH, he.
So that we only hear another one every day, um, there was supposed to be a list of, you know, who they have problems with.
Oh, if they had, uh, if they had any potential conflicts with, or claimed any potential, other potential conflicts with the board?
Yeah, well, so they.
We didn't get a response on that, that it was no, I didn't think they.
Well, not yet, and, well, just to fill the board in procedurally, uh, for vice of counsel, we have reached out to the, the objecting attorney and, and, and asked them to provide us which, which, what's, what, I can't speak today, the disclosure form or ten percent owners. So in other words, they provide us with a statement that gives us everybody that has ownership in that particular application, which would be the car, car wash site. They have not submitted their application, that's usually a part of the submittal package, but since that applicant has not submitted yet, we are not aware. So we've asked them to supply us with that information, which will be helpful for our board professionals so that they can review that information and just confirm in writing.
That they don't have any relationship, okay.